Twenty-fourth to order, roll call please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino. Alderman Zizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor please.
Here, I declare a quorum present, please stand, join pledge of allegiance.
My pledge one being to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to approve the city council minutes of May third, two thousand eighteen.
Make a motion.
Second?
Art and Eugene. Any questions, comments, or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. That passes. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? We have one, Mr. Robert Castellano, if you could go to the podiums, address.
Hi, good evening. My name's Robert Castellano, I've lived in town for over thirty years. I've also been part of the community within Cub Scouts, baseball, and also Weeba, which is our basketball club. I've worked with our youths, I've worked with our community, I've worked with our church, I've worked with our village before. I know many of the members that sit on this board. I have also worked with you guys in many other situations to help your children out, my children out, to see a better future for our town. What I see right now is the board has taken a negligent stand on situations that have occurred to me three years ago. Three years ago, we built a trench over on Edgebrook, to, excuse me, in Lionwood, to protect Edgebrook from getting the water retention coming over on their side, which was a tremendous problem for many of years, as we all know. During that process, I had called the village to express my concerns during July, expressing that I'm no engineer, but I do understand that if you build a trench on one side of the creek, the only way that the water's gonna come is on the other side of the creek, where I lived. During that time and during that process, we've looked into several situations of what occurred. I've got a little bit more education from the process of looking into those things. First thing of all, we've been paying a firm, McGinty Firm. Last year I came to the board and I said, "McGinty Firm is being paid ten thousand dollars a year to find out whether or not our Ajax bricks are falling in." Our Ajax bricks have been falling in for years. Why we're paying this firm, I have no idea. I brought these concerns to Matt, Matt York, and I expressed my concerns in saying to Matt that this is a problem. I'm seeing water coming on my land. I've lived in this particular house for seventeen years. Never have I seen water in the back of my yard, ever. Now the concern has got even deeper. From the water that's coming over to the land, it has taken over five feet of my land and destroyed it. The village came out and tried to make an attempt to fix the problem. They came out with a product that was a mesh, a mesh that is normally used for grass that is laid on a flat surface. Had nothing to do with erosion problems whatsoever. So the product that we spent the money on, which I did advise during the process of them being out there, that it is the wrong product, that that netting will not hold any dirt, will not hold anything back, and it will be flushed away. Nobody thought anything of it to say, "Wait a minute, let's stop here." Matt continued on with the project, the project went through. During our first rainfall, all that work that was done, that the village paid for, was washed away. Since the last year, I've been still waiting to get some sort of resolution. They came out, they decided that they're gonna fix the property. When they came out there to fix the property, they brought tractors through the lawn. My home was the only home that they can gain access through, for the home to the south, which is Dolores Cox's home, and the home to the north, which is my friend Mark that lives there. Both homes had to get through, and they had to raise up some of the land. All that process, all that work, was all washed away. We all know that, but we did nothing about it. We didn't go back to the firm to say to that company who we hired, "Why did you use a product that won't retain and hold water?" None of that will work. Matt was well aware of it, but we continued on. We said, "We're gonna fix it still, Rob, we're gonna get back to you and we're gonna take care of it." The whole year passed, what ended up in my yard, in the back of the yard, after they ran their tractors through and destroyed all my grass, they put this netting down in the backyard also. All I have in my backyard now is white netting. No grass, no longer. During the process of me moving into that home seventeen years ago, we spent four thousand dollars to remove trees, to lay grass, and to make sure that we can have grass all the way in the back of my yard to my fence where we used to sit. There's three chairs that sit back there in a nice flower area that my wife and I used to love and sit and watch the creek, watch the ducks, watch the beavers, watch the foxes, watch everything, through Lionwood, catch some games, too. We can't look out on that side any longer. That ditch that was built has now become a health hazard. That water that is filling up in that areas is not just rain off, rainwater, it has now become a filthy cesspool of dirt, muck, and feces. And where we're getting that from, we have the sewer department right down the street from there. When that water overflows and raises over there, we're getting some of that backwash from the sewer coming down the creek. It's coming back into that area where we built that trench, where Wooddale decided to build that trench, and that area now has become a filthy cesspool. It's now no longer just an issue of Rob getting water, it's now become a health issue. So I think the village needs to take a stance, get out there, go back to the Army Corps of Engineers that said this was gonna work for you guys. It did work and keep the water off Edgebrook, but they never told you that all the water's gonna go on Forest View now. So we've had issues with water in this town for many of years. We have drain pipes that we put in on the city side now on Forest View also, to help that situation out. Has it really done what we wanted it to do? I don't believe it has. I believe that we put sewers in areas where we didn't need sewers. I think we overextended the amount of sewers on that street that we did with the streetscape. I think that the side of the gravel was something that we did not need, but that's all was done, and the city enforced it. They also, during the process of that time, moving towards the, I'm sorry, I'm going on to another situation, but into the front of the street when we decided to do the Forest View Avenue project, that project, I specifically made a concern about a tree that was over fifty years old that sat in the front of my house. I said to the village, "I do not want a sewer in that area because that is a dangerous situation to dig and rut in to a tree that's fifty years old. You're gonna destroy the roots and you're gonna make that tree fall on my house." So I went to work that morning, specifically told the contractors, "Do not do anything, I'm trying to get ahold of Matt." I got ahold of Matt that day, I informed him and also called Jeff during that process here, and explained to him my concerns also about the situation, that it's not right, I don't need a sewer, I'm at the highest point of the land, we have thirteen more, and every single resident on that road, at the highest point of the str, highest point of the roads, all have sewers in their yards now. And this was all for this whole reason, that originally I was told by the city that it was gonna help contain the water down at the end of the street. Well, from the very first rainfall that we had and we had that situation with all the sewers that were put in, we still get water down the street, in the same spot, in the same area, that's always drained and filled in that area. If everyone knows, Forest View, seven, seven homes were bought out, either by the forest preserve or by the village. One of the two had bought those homes, and we have knocked them down. The wildlife preserve is on the street also. All this stuff could have been fixed properly if the Army Corps of Engineers actually did a site walk with you guys and came out and physically saw the area, when the rain was falling, when it was. But I think we jumped the gun, and that's just my opinion, and I think we spent money with architects, and I work with architects and engineers every day because in my firm, we are a life safety consulting firm, so we have to sometimes educate the engineers and the architects themselves because they necessarily use templates and they just say, "This is what's gonna work." But do they really know? No, we're all human, we all make mistakes. So in this faction, we have a mistake, in the back and in the front. So my home now has a problem in the front of the home and in the back of the home. Things that I've told the city that I didn't wanna get done, they went ahead and did it anyways, and they've caused damage to my home. All I'm looking for from the city is to put me back in a position where I was prior to you causing the damage. I didn't ask for any of this, nor did I say that it was okay to leave my home in a disarray. I have nothing more than netting on the ground in the backyard, I have a tree that was taken down by the city and not replaced, and I hear today, after I've called last year about the tree, we couldn't do it last year, then we're gonna do it this year in spring, and all of a sudden now, there's no nurseries that have trees. Well, there are nurseries that have trees, there's three nurseries as close as, as close as Wheaton Nursery and as close as Out Grove, that has trees, that we can't plant right now. But we say, the village says to me, "No, we can't plant a tree." So once again this year, I'll be out with a tree, that that's particular tree that you guys decide to put the sewer in there, trench all the roots out, destroy the tree, take it down. Now every year, I have to sit out there at four o'clock in the afternoon with a beating sun on the front of my house, when I originally had a beautiful shaded tree that shaded my home. So not alone have you incurred a more electricity cost for me, 'cause I have to run my air conditioning more, you've also incurred a big giant rut in the front of my home that's, nothing's been done. Grass hasn't been fixed, this is over a year ago. So I patiently been waiting for three years for the back, and I've been patiently waiting for a year for the front to be fixed. So what I would expect from the village is to go back, like I said last year, find out who was the person that originally did the Ajax bricks for us. It was a resident in town. I don't know who it is, but we should have records of that. And we should find out how that individual was capable of getting the funding to put all that Ajax bricks in for us originally, 'cause it wasn't a city official, it was an individual. So we should know this. So from last year to this year, still to this day, I've asked the question, "Does anybody know who that individual is?" Nobody knows. But we have records of it in town. Why the city manager, why Matt can't find it, I don't know. But I'm looking for answers. I'm expecting the board to take some initiative here, to find out why I get the water now and why we can't do anything. One more year from this point, my fence, which is a steel fence in the back of my yard, will be in the creek. I have lost over seven feet of land and two feet in height. That's a lot of land. Nobody told me at the village they were gonna do this. Nobody said, the Army Corps of Engineers to you guys, said that this is gonna destroy property on the other side of the creek. And if they did, why wasn't there a notice that went out to me expressing that right away when we built that? So in July, when we started that trench and I called, why hasn't Matt York done any of the work that we have asked? I don't know, to this day. I don't get a straightforward answer, I get these backwards, backpedaling answers. And the last thing that was really, really upsetting to me is Pat called me up on the phone, and he told me, "We're not gonna do anything for you." And I thought to myself, "How disrespectful for a lawyer to call up, not knowing that an individual has already taken admission of guilt and already came out and tried repairing the situation, but made the situation worse, and thinks that there's no legal responsibility as a lawyer, a council member." I was shocked by these things. And so as today, I came down to the village, as I called each and every one of these aldermen's that sit on the board here today, to find out for me. I've lived here for thirty years, I've dedicated my life to this town. I don't plan on leaving this town, but I certainly will not stand by idly and let the village take advantage of any individual in my town. So I'd expect that everyone in this village that lives here should work here. But if we don't have individuals that live here and work here, I believe that there should be a petition that needs to go out. Because I think if people lived here and worked here and had a business in here, they would have more desire and more concern. But we have individuals that don't live here, that work here. So I think their concerns are necessarily not for here. So that's one of the petitions that I think I am gonna file, around town, and see what other people feel about that. Do you really think that the people that are working here in our village are working for us? Are they really, truly putting out the effort that we need to? I don't see it, and I'm disappointed by that. And when people call me up and they say, "Rob, why is this going on for you? How come? Why can't you get a straight answer?" I've talked into other mayors and towns, they're good friends of mine, they can't understand it, they've been by my house, they've seen these things, they're kind of in dismay. We have put, Displanes have done situations in where the creeksides have affected other towns and residents. They have been able to repair those, Displanes has done it, other towns have done it. Why can't we make a simple fix for me, so I don't have to sit there and be flooded out every time we get a trickle of rain? Before it would take, the only time I got rain was in the eighties, in the, in the eighties or the early nineties, I'm not sure, when that big giant flood we got down here where everybody flooded, the whole town was underwater. But for some reason, I can't get a straight answer, so I'm looking from the board to give me a straight answer tonight. How are we gonna repair my situation? My lawn equipment, every time I run my lawn equipment, I've sent everyone pictures today, on their phones, whoever could get them. If I called your house phone, it would let me know that it wasn't able to send you these pictures. But I would like you to take a look at these pictures and see what I have to deal with. If anybody would know on any landscaping equipment, when you go out and you weed whack and you go out by any type of netting, it just wraps up around that weed whacker. So every time I go out and do any edging, I have to go back and take a razor blade and sit there for five minutes and cut all that stuff off. At one point, I told two kids to come by and rip up half the netting, because I'm tired of finding stakes in my lawn that are metal stakes, that I have to take my lawnmower and tractor over, and all of a sudden I'm shooting these things out. And one of these times, it's gonna shoot out, maybe shoot in somebody's window. Another thing is that gravel that we put down in the front of the street, Matt, that also, I shot a rock into my window the other day. So I busted my own window. Something I didn't want was all that gravel on the side of the road, because all that looks like is a big pile of dirt. It doesn't contain water, it doesn't help any situation out. What we did is we put gravel on the side of the road so people can park there. That's what not we wanted, that we want a street filled with cars that only can physically get two cars down there as it is. We didn't want it opened up like that, so my concern was, why did we put gravel on the street? We never had gravel for. All that gravel does now is goes on the street and embeds into, embeds into the asphalt. It beds into my car, it brings it up my driveway, it brings it into my house. I shoot rocks at people, I shoot rocks down the road. All these things, the village, I don't know if the village is really looking into these things or be just being sold a bill of goods and are we buying it? So the people that are working for us know these things. So I'd expect the people that are working for us to sit there and really look into these matters. And when people call up and say, "Wait a minute, stop, I don't want this, why are you doing this? Look at the effects that's gonna happen, has anybody brought this to your attention? Nope, you're the only one." But let me tell ya, I've talked to everybody on my street, nobody wanted the gravel, nobody wanted the sewers. Why we did it is because the village said we had to. So what did we end up with? We got a street from Edgebrook that got cleared up from water from the ditch. We pushed it all on Forest View, we pushed it all on that street. How are we fixing it? That's what I wanna know. But that's it, that's all I have to say, and I would hope that somebody gets some answers for me.
Thank you. Mr. Barnes, do you want?
Yeah, I, I had extensive conversation with Mr. Castellano, and, and as he's well aware, the, this is part of a larger stream bank stabilization program, the council has looked into it, and, and there was a, an attempt to accommodate his concerns. Some of the things he's raised, the tree, and the, the tree's in the city right away, it was in the, in the way of the project, and like all the other trees that are in the city right away that are impeding the project, those trees are...
You are incorrect on that, that city, that city has already informed me that tree was not in the city thing. I was responsible for that tree because I asked the city to take some limbs off the tree because they were gonna fall on ComEd's line. So once again, Pat, I don't know if you've talked to Matt, but Matt's the one that told me that's on my property, that tree.
That's absolutely incorrect, and you know what, I'm not gonna...
This, this is not gonna become a debate.
Yeah, I'm not gonna debate, Mr. Castellano. Much of what he said this evening is simply not factually correct. The, there is a, a plan for the tree, for example, that will be planted in, in connection with the fall planting. The, you know, the, the, there was a, an attempt to address his situation. He doesn't like the design of the project, he doesn't like the work that had to be done. The city's engaged in a, in a course of action to address flooding throughout the city, and this is one of those projects that was done. It didn't make any, any of those properties any worse as a result of it, in fact, it improved it. And the entire project, once completed, will address a lot of the, a lot of the flooding over there. I tried to have a very cordial and professional conversation with Mr. Castellano. He repeatedly interrupted me, interrupted me and provided me with information that simply was not factually accurate. So the city has, the city, and, and Mr. Castellano has indicated that he's got lawyers on staff and that he, it's his intention to pursue legal action against the city. So the city has, the city has no... The city has no obligation, no, to a particular property owner, you have an obligation to the city and the residents at large, and the city has satisfied that obligation and is not subject to any liability for the concerns that Mr. Castellano has raised, many of which, again, are not factually accurate.
All right. But this is, this is not open for discussion. This is, all right, this is not for discussion. Nope. No, you guys wanna ask questions? This is public comment. So it's no questions.
We can't ask questions of staff?
Not, this will not be, this is an item not on the agenda, you guys will be able to bring your questions to a committee. If you got some questions, tell Mr. Mermis to put it on the agenda. That's, that's not for tonight, all right. Any other citizens wish to be heard? Written communiques, I don't have any. Mayor's report, Memorial Day Parade, this Monday, May twenty-eighth, eleven a.m., after the parade. The parade starts at eleven on Addison Road, and the memorial will follow right after the parade ends, at the memorial... Right, step off at eleven. Also, June fourteenth, Public Works, Open House, three thirty to six thirty, at seven twenty North Central. Next, we have Public Safety Month proclamation. Whereas our city's continuing effort to address the critical issues of safety, energy, efficiency, water conservation, and sustainability in the built environment that affect our citizens both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, give us confidence that our structures are safe and sound. And whereas our confidence is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building, safety, and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, what's going on? Design professionals, laborers, and others in construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings, and whereas these guardians develop and implement the highest quality codes to protect Americans in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, and play, and whereas the international code, the most widely adopted building safety, energy, and fire prevention codes in the nation, used by most cities, counties, and states, include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wild, woodland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month reminds the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings, and whereas the building code saves lives, the theme for this year is Building Safety Month and encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. And whereas each year, in observance of the Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the, and the commitment to improve building safety and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by locals and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I enunciate to the police, mayor of City of Wood Dale, to hereby proclaim the month of May, two thousand eighteen, as Building Safety Month in the City of Wood Dale, and encourage all citizens to join with their neighbors in participation in Building Safety Month activities. Next item, DuPage Senior Citizens Council donation request. Anything on this? All right.
I'd like to make a motion to, to, for the senior citizen, make it up for a thousand dollars.
A thousand? DuPage Senior Citizens, no, one thousand. No, you said one, right?
Yeah. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Question?
Hold on. Okay, we got a motion, we got a second. Any questions? Alderman Roy, Roy Wesley, go ahead, you go first, I heard you first. You wanna say something?
DuPage Senior, what, what did he do?
It's, the Meals on Wheels is what, it's a letter in here. It was the Meals on Wheels.
Okay. Do we have a list of how many citizens use that in the City of Wood Dale?
Well, they said, I believe, went on, fifty residents.
Do we, do we have a list?
No, no, I don't think we actually got a list. Mr. Mermis, maybe he can answer that.
I don't have a list, but I don't, Brad, do you remember the numbers from last time? 'Cause we did donate before.
No, but it was like, he's asking how many residents?
No, I know, but he may remember the number before.
Oh, Mr. Wilson, go ahead. Go ahead, if you remember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, my reflection is it was between fifty and sixty residents for the Meals on Wheels. I thought they did a couple of other services as well, but the Meals on Wheels was the primary focus. And the last time we donated, which was two years ago, was five thousand dollars, and the time before that was five thousand as well. But it was between fifty and sixty.
We, we didn't donate two years in a row, that was...
Correct, two years ago.
Two years ago was, but before that was maybe eight years, ten years.
Five or six at least.
Nah, I think I remember that being further, but, again.
Definitely a significant gap between two years ago and the previous time.
Before the last time, I don't even think I was on the council when it happened.
No, you weren't.
Right, that's what I thought, that's why I'm saying it's... Anyways, fifty to sixty, Alderman Wesley, follow up, go ahead.
This is a county program, isn't it?
Mr. Wilson, who can answer that? I, I would imagine, but...
Yeah.
Mr. Mermis?
You know, I don't have a lot of background on it, this issue was brought up by Alderman Sorrentino at the last meeting, and we had donated to them in the past, I don't have a lot of details on that organization.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
Do we know that, it says DuPage Seniors, is it a nonprofit organization, is it a profit organization? Do we, do we have that?
Mr. Wilson, go ahead.
Yeah, my understanding is it's a county-wide service, and it is a, my understanding is that it's a not-for-profit entity.
Mr. Barnes?
Yeah, it's administered through the county, they do look for contributions through the township organizations, private contributions, but it's, it's administered through the county, it is a not-for-profit, just like the City of Wood Dale's a not-for-profit governmental entity.
Alderman Messina.
Did I hear that they're funded through the townships?
Mr. Barnes?
They seek funding from all sources, including, they render services on behalf of the township.
Township gets none of my, so...
Go ahead, Alderman Messina, follow up?
Yeah, um, yeah, no, I would just, I mean, I think I've kinda, going off of what Alderman Roy Wesley is saying, I mean, to service fifty, sixty people, I'd rather put money into the Bensonville, Bensonville-Wooddale Food Pantry and directly impact our, our area than it scatter across DuPage County. Let them go to the Addison Township. They wanna be so generous, let them go through there, but I'm sorry, I'd, I'd rather, I'd rather our money go directly to Bensonville or Addison, or rather Bensonville or Wooddale Food Pantry.
No, no, there's already a motion. Alderman Woods, yeah, we have a motion and a second for the thousand, go ahead.
Just some clarity, the Meals on Wheels is predominantly for people that actually can't make it to the, the food pantry. They're, that are homebound, and they deliver the prepared meal to them. So it's a different thing, I, you know, just to fill in some of the blanks.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
And that's exactly what I was gonna say, because they, they hot meals that are delivered to their houses, okay? It's not that they go food pantry and get whatever, it's, it's not that. And I will tell you, my neighbor uses it, and she's very grateful for it, so, I mean, a thousand dollars, I mean...
Alderman Jacob.
I, I guess my question is, I mean, if we donate the money, I mean, I'm fine with donating, but is it going to Wooddale residents if it's just going to Wheaton or some other towns' residents?
Well, they, it goes into the bucket, and so they service fifty to sixty residents in Wooddale. So take it how you wanna take it, I mean, it goes into a big pot, so. Any other questions? Another follow-up, go ahead.
I, I guess, is there any way we could specify it to go strictly to Wooddale?
Mr. Barnes, I doubt it.
No, 'cause you can't make a restricted donation, but I, I will tell you, and I've worked with the Northern Illinois Food Bank, and they were, they had participated with the program, the cost of getting those fifty residents, hot meals far exceeds roughly twenty dollars per resident for the, for their duration. So it's, it's just a token participation as opposed to funding the specific program in Wooddale. That would not be sufficient to fund the Wooddale for the, uh, the, fund the Meals on Wheels for the Wooddale residents.
Follow up, Alderman Messina.
Would there be any restrictions in, you guys are all about the door-to-door delivery, but in having our dial-a-ride driver drop them off? At least I know my fifty or sixty residents can actually get a meal versus praying that maybe one of them gets...
That's, that sounds like another restriction that's not gonna happen.
Yeah, there's, yeah, you can't, because there's some health department rules, those that are being delivered, they have to be delivered in sealed containers, they have to be delivered in a, in a specific time...
Proper temperature.
...frame, so that they can, the food can maintain the designated temperature for the food, and you wouldn't have that control, and the people that are delivering it have specific training in regard to that, and the, the vehicles that are, are doing it also have the...
Right, has to be proper temperature. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, let's have a roll call on this, please.
Alderman Catalano? Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Ah, yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Sure.
And that passes. Mayoral appointments, Community Development Commission reappointment of Brad Carish for a two-year term commencing on May 24th, 2018, expiring on April 30th, 2020, Community Development Commission reappointment of Dave Woods for a two-year term commencing on May 24th, 2018, and expiring on April 30th, 2020, Community Development Commission reappointment of Ron DeMasco for a two-year term commencing on May 24th, 2018, and expiring on April 30th, 2020, Police Pension Board reappointment of George Elverson for a two-year term commencing on May 24th, 2018, and expiring April 30th, 2020, Wooddale for Greener Tomorrow reappointment of Joe Coles for a two-year term commencing on May 24th, 2018, expiring on April 30th, 2020, Wooddale for Greener Tomorrow reappointment of Mark Winger for a two-year term commencing on May 24th, 2018, expiring on April 30th, 2020, Wooddale for Greener Tomorrow reappointment of Barb McCauley for a two-year term commencing on May 24th, 2018, expiring April 30th, 2020, Wooddale for Greener Tomorrow reappointment of Pat Sempinetti for a two-year term commencing on May 24th, 2018, and expiring on April 30th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion.
Second. Art and Peter. Peter, second, roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. That concludes my report, City Manager's Report.
Just a couple new businesses that we'd like to welcome to town. Standard Refrigeration is located at 321 East Foster Avenue, and is a manufacturer of tube and shell condensers and evaporators, serving specialized HVAC companies. Pronto Freightways Inc. is located on 1400 North Middle Boulevard, and is a freight forwarding company. BMT Express Inc. is located at 960 Seaver Drive, and is a dispatch center for transportation service and trucking company. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And the manager's report?
On businesses they just mentioned.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
Could you tell me how many businesses within the last six months have sales tax? Could you put that in the manager's report? New businesses.
Is that a, new businesses?
Yep.
Okay.
Sure.
That reduces sales tax.
Okay, got that? All right, next, if no objections, we have nine items on the consent agenda, I'll need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Okay, and that passes. Next, I need a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, resolution seeking to approve an agreement, contract between the City of Wooddale and Landmark Sign Group for the installation of signs at the Metro train station and not to exceed amount of $32,530. Replacement of Squad 402 and a not to exceed amount of $27,510 from Curry Motors. Item number three, replacement of incident command vehicle and the not to exceed amount of $33,367 from Curry Motors. Item number four, resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wooddale and corrective asphalt materials for pavement, preventive maintenance, and an amount not to exceed $35,198.50. Item number five, resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wooddale, RJN Group for the fiscal year 2019, sanitary sewer rehabilitation, design, and construction observation, and an amount not to exceed $59,880. Item number six, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wooddale and RW Dunhaman for the emergency patches on Addison Road and a not to exceed amount of $17,440.99. Item number seven, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wooddale and Americana Landscape Group for the City Hall Landscaping Project and a not to exceed amount of $62,692.41. Item number eight, approval of purchase of 2019 Peterbilt Model 337 truck from JX Peterbilt and an aerial lift unit supplied by Cannon Truck Equipment and amount not to exceed $194,196. Item number nine, a resolution seeking to approve an intergovernmental agreement between DuPage County and City of Wooddale for water quality grant for the Squaw Creek Project. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Second. And Peter first, and Mike second. It's consent agenda, you should have taken it off if you wanted to. Okay. All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
No, he's not here.
No, he's not here. Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Okay, next, Committee Chairman Reports, Planning and Zoning, Alderman Woods.
I regret to inform you, I have no report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Health and Safety, Alderman Wesley?
I have no report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works, Alder Miss Sizmarsky.
I have one, Mayor. Resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wooddale and Robinson Engineering for the Irving Park Road Street Light Project, and they knocked the exceed amount of $19,650. That is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, questions, roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Concludes my report, Mayor.
And that passes. Next, Finance Administration, Alderman Messina.
I have three reports, Mayor. First one is an ordinance approving the tax increment financing district eligibility study, redevelopment plan, and project for the Wooddale Road redevelopment project area. That is my motion.
Second.
Okay, Randy and Art, Art second.
Mike and-
Wait, hold on.
No, Randy.
Hold on a second. Wait, we're gonna get the motion, make sure we got Randy and Art. Okay, questions, Alderman Eugene Wesley, I know you had your hand up first. Correct, yes. Any other questions?
Yep.
Alderman Roy Wesley, yes, go ahead.
I guess these questions are to the attorney. This TIF area that we're talking about is by the bank here. My question is, by not doing the TIF area of this, that, most of that land is owned by the city, why can't we put that on the market and see what kind of price we could get on that? Instead of doing a TIF, that's the first question, is it, could we put it on the market and just see what we get instead of doing a TIF?
Mr. Barnes?
I have a couple others, too.
Okay, go ahead. Well, the item that's on the, that's on the table now is for the ordinance approving the eligibility study and the plan, so to the extent there's certain advantages to have in, which I think we had somebody from S.B. Friedman had discussed at one point in time at length, there's some financing incentives to a developer that would encourage them to come look at possibly developing property in that area. What it's intended to do is to increase the valuation of all the land in that area for the future, so it will increase ultimately your tax base, it's going to generate that, and that increment is then going to be available for the, for the future. You can, under the municipal code, you can sell city-owned property, there's a process for selling the city-owned property, there's a process in the TIF Act that specifically contemplates the sale of that property to a, if a developer is interested, you can work out other concessions on the part of the, part of the developer, the city is able to direct the sale of the property as opposed to putting it on the market and having someone purchase it and never developing it, which would be taxed then as vacant property. So there's some advantages to having the, having the property marketed and purchased from a developer who's going to increase the value of that property. Go ahead, follow up.
So, in a TIF, if you make it a TIF area, the city could sell it to whoever they want?
Mr. Barnes? That is correct. You have a follow up?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, the question is if I wanna sell it, if the city wants to sell it to you, they could just say yes, or maybe they wanna sell it to me. My question, my question basically is, then they would pick who they wanna sell it to, correct?
Mr. Barnes?
No, there's still some parameters, first of all, they couldn't sell it to me, that would be a conflict, nor could they sell it to you.
I'm using it.
But no, the city would, there's still parameters, the city would, you know, it has to be able to get essentially the value back for the, for the city-owned property, whether it's in its straight purchase price or in other concessions such as the development of the property and so forth, so that's one of the advantages of the, of using the TIF Act for the sale of government-owned property.
Do you have another question? Anyone else?
No.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yes. And that passes.
Next report is an ordinance designating the Wooddale Road redevelopment project area. That is my motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
My final report is an ordinance adopting tax increment financing, and that would be my report, Mayor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on that. Any questions on this? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. All right, and that concludes your report?
That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under Other Business, Airport Noise, Alderman Jacob.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you.